Broadcasting. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the order our regular city council meeting for April 20th, 2021. Appreciate your patience. For those that are watching live, we're starting approximately 20 minutes later than normal. Our work session ran long. Like to ask everyone to start our meeting by joining me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. It never gets less awkward in a Zoom, but we always love to do it.
I just want to give a shout out to Councilor Brousse for having a flag for us to look at.
Yeah. Sylvia Rolco.
Mayor Maze.
Here.
Council President Rosner.
Here.
Council Brousse.
Here.
Council Garland.
Here.
Council Young.
Here.
Council Cooper.
Here.
And Council Scott.
I'm back. I'm here.
Thank you.
Where'd you go? Thank you, Sylvia. Next item is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It made the motion Russell seconded discussion on the motion. Who, huh?
Can we discuss who seconded it?
It was Russell. To Russell. All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Awesome. Motion passes. Next, we have a consent agenda this evening for items. Item A is approval of the April 1st, 2021 city council meeting minutes. Item B is approval of the April 6th, 2021 city council meeting minutes. Item C is resolution 2021 dash 018 authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract for the Hall Street pavement and storm rehabilitation project. Item C is resolution 2021 dash 019 forming and appointing the members of the technical advisory committee and the community advisory committee for the Sherwood West concept plan. Re-look.
I make the motion approved, sir.
Second.
Thank you, Kim, for the motion and Tim for the second discussion on the motion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next on our agenda is citizen comments during this COVID pandemic days, we ask people to submit testimony 24 hours in advance or more so that we can read it into the record. And Sylvia, you notified me this earlier that we did not have any, any citizen comments, correct?
That's correct.
Awesome. Thank you, Sylvia. Next on our agenda is presentations. We have two presentations today. First, recognition of a outstanding young member of our community, Luke Day, who achieved the rank of Eagle Scout. We're always excited to recognize youth in our community for variety of different achievements and certainly achieving the rank of Eagle Scout is, is one to celebrate. Sylvia, I think he gave us a description of his project. As a reminder to the community, the, one of the last things young, young adult, young men do to achieve the Eagle Scout is to do a big project, takes a lot of planning, often getting things donated or money raised to do it and getting the help of, of other scouts and or adults to, to make it happen. And it's usually quite a, quite the deal. So Sylvia, you want to share, share what his project was?
Absolutely. So this was a write-up from Luke and it starts my ideal project was the Archer Glen walkway completion. At Archer Glen Elementary, there was a grassy medium with a signboard in the middle. A path had gone out to the signboard, but didn't extend to the other sidewalk. Teachers who park on the street or kids walking to school would either have to walk all the way around or walk through the mud during wetter months. As I really enjoyed my time there, I wanted to give back to my school. So to fix this, I extended the path 15 feet to the other side. This was the fun project, especially contacting businesses with that about supplies such as gravel, sand and pavers. I did it on the 28th and 29th of last August. We began by just digging up sod and then started on the dirt. There was a tree, a tree nearby, so I didn't quite anticipate the branches of roots in the dirt, but a quick Home Depot run where a pickaxe fixed that. After the dirt was removed, we smoothed the bottom the best we could to the right depth. After that, we filled in and set the gravel and were done for the day. The next day, we just filled in sand, smoothed it out and laid the pavers. Overall, it was a great time and I had a lot of people help me out. It was great because whenever I passed by now, I see that teachers are parking on the street. So I know my project is being good, put to good use. Sign the day.
Excellent. Yeah. Many hands certainly helps make the work easier. And that sounds like a very nice addition to the community. It's a great job, Luke. I'm sure your power, your parents are proud of you. I want you and, and your fellow scouts, I want you to know that the community, your Sherwood community and your Sherwood City Council are also proud of you for this achievement. So on that, we want to give you a certificate of achievement. That will present to you on behalf of the city of Sherwood and the Sherwood City Council. And we congratulate you on your outstanding achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Great job, Luke.
Mayor, if I could just chime in too, as a, as a parent of a fifth grade student at Archer Glen, I am very appreciative of the work that he's done and glad to be able to put a name to that work. We definitely take advantage of that new walkway now with morning drop offs. And so fantastic work on that. Really, really great work.
Excellent. Yeah. Thanks, Sean. Our second presentation today, we're excited to welcome Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue Chief Kenny Fintrus.
Thank you for having me. That's a tough act to follow. Congratulations, Luke. That's a great story. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kenny Fintrus. I'm the deputy chief of operations for Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue. So I oversee our operations, our training division and our EMS division. And I'm honored to be here tonight to give you the annual state of the district. So I'm going to share my screen. And we'll roll through this. Everybody see that? Okay. Okay. And I can go through this and answer any questions you have at the end and we'll just go ahead and get started here. So this is a picture of one of our firefighters and you can see they're wearing a different PPE than they would normally wear. You've got kind of a Tyvek suit on and special respiratory wear. And this is what they wear for the high risk COVID patients. You know, it's been a tough year for us as it has for many cities and public entities. We've been going at this for over a year now, and I can tell you, we, we stood up a task force very early on with the focus of developing contingency plans for our business and operations. We made sure that we had the appropriate and adequate PPE for our responders so that they can be safe and continue to serve our citizens. And I can, I can say I'm extremely proud of our organization that we've been able to do that for this year. Early on in this, we had an outpouring of community support. It was really pretty incredible to see our community stand up and help us. We had people donating things at every fire station. They would literally drop off bags of their personal N95s and masks that they had. It was really quite, quite incredible, particularly in Sherwood, the Home Depot donated hundreds of items to support our response during COVID. It was extremely humbling to see the outpouring of support initially and ongoing. Now COVID changed things through the year, but we were still able to maintain connectivity with our community. And this is a picture of an event that occurred in December where we partnered with the Home Depot and the YMCA. We donated over a thousand dollars in holiday meals to local families. This is a great picture. I think one of the lasting things from COVID will be all of the drive-through and drive-by birthday parties and grad parties. It'll be interesting to see if that continues, but here in this picture, this was the local TVF and R volunteers partnering with Langer, Langers to host a drive-through visit with Santa for local families. You can see they're all socially distanced and have their appropriate PPE on. Great event. So this is a picture of our vaccine pod. We've been, we've been focused on this nonstop since December. We, we stood up a vaccine branch, which is part of our COVID task force. And they've been hard at work and I'm, I'm pleased to announce they vaccinated over 35,000 people, emergency responders and members of the communities that we serve. I've talked to many of the people that have served in the pod and they say that it's one of the best experiences in their fire service career because they can really see the impact that they're having on our community. And we've partnered with our communities. This has been a huge partnership with our communities. Currently, we have vaccination efforts taking place in Wilsonville at the Clackamas Community College site. And then in Beaverton at Nike, we do a drive-through pod as well as the Evergreen Theater in Yamhill County. Last year was a historic wildfire season, not only in Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescues area, but in the state of Oregon. There were devastating fires throughout the state and tragically, many communities lost hundreds of homes, businesses, entire cities burnt down and tragically lives were lost. This is a picture of one of our firefighters at the Shahealem Mountain Fire. This was about a 800 acre fire that we were on for about seven days. We had many homes that were threatened and we were able to safely evacuate all of the residents. And I'm proud to report that no homes were lost and it was an incredible effort from our organization. Additionally, we also deployed to Clackamas County and parts of Southern Oregon. And then as the wildfire kind of wound down here in Oregon, we were able to deploy and help our neighbors to the south down in California. Spend a little bit of time and I'm just going to kind of walk you through this graph that has a lot of data about what has occurred in Sherwood and for our station 33. You can see that there were 1,439 calls for service in 2020. If you look down at the lower right-hand portion of the graph, you'll see the trend from 2016 to 2020. Typically, what we've been seeing is an upward trend, but surprisingly it dipped down in 2020. And we've actually seen that across all of our stations and we're theorizing that that's probably due to COVID and people really being on lockdown and wanting to remain in their house. So they didn't call 911 as much as they had the previous year. I'll take you back up to the top here and you'll see across the very top, we've got call types broken out into the various categories, EMS, fire hazard and so forth. The highest percentage of calls was EMS, almost 79%. And that holds true across our entire service district. We're about 78, 79, 80% EMS. And you can see the, the numbers of calls throughout the various call types. As we kind of go down, you'll see it says dispatched as and situation found. And that's because they're not always the same. When somebody calls 911, they see something and then they give that information to the dispatcher. And then the dispatcher sends the resources based on that. And sometimes they don't always line up. And the example that I can give you is commonly we'll send out an entire package of resources to what we think is a structure fire, a house fire or an apartment fire, and it ends up being a dryer vent. And you can see that's how you get a discrepancy and dispatched as versus situation found. Going further down, you can see that we, we break it out into more granular category, structure fires, cooking fires. We track our critical patients, cardiac arrest, chest pain, stroke. So we can really understand what our performance is in those areas. And then at the lower left-hand portion, you'll see we track calls for the hour of the day to really help us inform our deployment needs. And in this case, you'll see it, this is, this is consistent with what we see throughout all of our stations. About the three o'clock, four o'clock, five o'clock hour, we start to see uptick in calls. And then through the evening hours, it starts to wind back down a little bit. To the right days of the week, it's interesting. Some areas there actually is noticeable difference in a day of the week that might be busier than another, but in Sherwood, it's pretty consistent across all days of the week. And then in the upper right-hand side, you'll see what looks like some very colorful colors and not so colorful colors. That's what we call a heat map. And that shows where the very bright areas are. That's where the calls are. And, and typically what we see is where there's more calls, that's where there's more population and more density. And that holds true here in Sherwood as well as the other parts of our area. And the last portion is just down in that lower right, you can see, you know, for Sherwood Station 33, they not only respond in their area, but they also help support other areas like Station 35 in King City and Station 34 in Tuolumne. This is a picture of our new logistic service center. This opened in December and this replaced our logistics center in our old Aloha campus. Currently, we house supply, fleet, facilities, maintenance and our communications. And this is a state-of-the-art building. It's improved many of our business processes and we're really excited about it. This is a picture of a commercial building that's, if you know where Miley Road is near the South Wilsonville exit, just across the Boones Bridge. This basically is adjacent to the Charbonneau community. And we, we're building a fire station in this commercial building. We did tenant improvements and it's literally a mini fire station. We're hoping to open it very soon, hopefully in May or the early part of June. We had a little minor setback with some mold that the building owner has taken care of, but this will house two firefighters working 24 hours a day and they will be on a rescue, as I mentioned, serving the Charbonneau and Wilsonville communities. This is a picture of one of our firefighters and she's done a tremendous job recently with recruitment and outreach, part of a team that's been doing that. And we have an academy for firefighters and our paramedics that's going to be coming up next fall. And we're really excited with the work that the, this group has done. They've done a ton of stuff with social media and outreach. And I feel confident that we're going to have a great group of candidates from their efforts. This is our new burn map. And this gives our residents the ability to access this and just punch in their address and see where they're located on the map. And if they're able to do any backyard burning or agricultural burning based on the fire threat and what's going on with the season of burning. We think this is really beneficial to our citizens, very easy to use and intuitive, and they can get a quick answer right away.
A question about that. If you don't mind. So this comes up often, you know, I think we just recently last week had, had a burn ban in effect, backyard burn ban in effect. And, and I often, I think there's often a lot of confusion around, does that apply or does that not apply to like a, a fire pit in somebody's backyard? And so can you give us a definitive answer on that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. That's a great question. Typically, it does not. We, when we go into a burn ban, we do allow warming fires, ceremonial fires, barbecues, that, that sort of thing. There are times when the fire danger is so extreme, we will shut that down. And that would be messaged on our social media. All of the forums that we message folks, that happens maybe once or twice a year, you know, August, September, when the fire danger is really extreme, but this type of year, this time of year, excuse me. You know, warming fires, recreational fires of that nature, they're still allowed. Did that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
So in November, 2021, and just a few short months, we'll be on the ballot measure with a, our bond measure. And here's the projects that we're focused on. We're looking to update a very aging training center and take care of some infrastructure needs and modernize the training fidelity for our firefighters. We'll be focused on stations. We have needs for equity and seismic and just station upgrades based on the age of facilities. Some of the stations will be scraped and rebuilt. And then we have land acquisition, land acquisition, as I mentioned, like in the Charbonneau area. We know that that is not long-term fixed to be in that building. So we'll continue to look for land as well as in other areas where we're predicting there's going to be a demand based on future growth. And then apparatus so that we can have our capital replacement move over to the bond and, and we'll be able to replace all of our apparatus and our entire fleet for that matter. So with that, I am happy to answer questions. I can stop sharing so I can see you. And then if there's anything you want to see, I can go back to it.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate you giving the update on on everything you're doing. Thanks for your pop-up vaccination centers. Certainly Sherwood staff has been able to take advantage of getting some vaccinations in Wilsonville. And I know folks in the community and beyond that have taken advantage of, of that as well and, and at the Nike campus. So good job. Way to, way to lean in and, and, and help, help everybody to gain access to vaccinations. That was great.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Council President Rosner has his hand up.
Just a quick question on the bond. Is that, is that a new capital bond or is that a renewal of an existing bond?
But Chief Olden, who has joined us this evening, she's going to answer questions related to the bond.
You bet. So we have, we're retiring some bonded debt. So this will basically replace that. So it will be cost neutral for the taxpayers.
Awesome. Taxpayers like that.
So Chief, you kind of hinted and I don't know if it was intended or not, but I, I got the impression from the bond that you said you were shifting capital replacement to the bond. So have you been historically even buying equipment from your general fund, general fund collections? And now you're shifting it to, to a bond or, or these be partial both ways and now it's all to the bond or?
Yeah. So we actually have had a kind of out of our general fund. I think we had some replacement items out of our levy as well. And our strategy moving forward would be to move capital replacement as far as equipment and apparatus over to the bond.
Council Brousse.
Yeah. In the senior advisory committee meeting last week, the idea of a pop-up vaccine clinic in Sherwood came up. So I would be remiss if I didn't ask that question. Is there an opportunity for that here in Sherwood?
Well, we, we have been analyzing all of those opportunities. I would say we are partnering with the counties and really taking direction from the counties. We have a partnership with Washington County and Yamhill County. And I don't know if they have plans to stand anything up in the city of Sherwood. I haven't heard of that. But we have been really kind of following their direction with our, our drive-through pods and our, our kind of standalone pod in Wilsonville. I can certainly pass that question on to our vaccine branch director and get back to you.
Great. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor.
Yep.
I tried to put my hand up, but mysteriously it gets, it keeps getting pulled down. I'm not sure how that, it must be a software defect. I'm pretty sure.
We're getting the clapping emoji.
It's, it's a mystery how that happens. My question is for Chief Olden. I know it's probably premature to talk about the community academy, but Tim and I had such a great time. I, I, and I think I mentioned this last time. I still get stopped in the aisle at the grocery store and people say, I changed my batteries. You know, on their smoke detectors because I'm wearing my little and I, I stopped explaining, I'm not really, yay, way to go. And I'm, anyway, so I know it's probably down the road. It depends on, you know, COVID and all that stuff. Are you planning on the fall or is it going to be spring or?
You will be happy to know that we are planning on September, presuming that we are, you know, allowed with the state and CDC guidelines, but that is our goal. And you're still an honorary firefighter. So I'm glad that you are proudly wearing your swag and you're doing your appropriate work for education.
Right, right. It's almost worn out. I'm going to have to buy another one because it's so awesome.
I, I think Councilor Rosner and Council, Councilor Griffin need a refresher course.
Well, I think there's three other counselors that haven't gone yet, but more than half of our council has been.
Yeah.
And she probably wants some people to have been through it for that first reboot session, right?
Nice try. Nice try.
Well, maybe the alumni could come just to heckle the new council members.
Yes. When they shoot the fire hose, that's the moment we want to be there.
I bet you we could arrange that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Love it.
All right, y'all.
But I encourage those of you who haven't gone, Mayor, to go.
Only been 20 years. Come on.
I am all in. It feels like there's all kinds of like childhood dreams I could fulfill in that.
Oh, Doug, you will, you will love it.
It's, I, I will say I had a wonderful time and I was lucky enough that the night or the day I was spent with Station 33, we had a wide range of calls, which is very unusual. So that was awesome. But my favorite moment was we were driving down Dewey and I was in the center back. And my kids and my wife came in a car the other way and they saw me in the truck and they just freaked out. They thought that was the coolest thing in the world.
I saw you also on one of those, one of the stops on one of the calls.
Yes.
Yeah.
So as part of the capital plan is, are you identified at this point, improvements to Station 33?
Yeah, the Station 33 will get improvements for sure. I think there's some equity improvements that will need to take place. We've actually entertained the possibility of moving one of our battalion chiefs over there. And so, you know, modify in the building so that we could accommodate that would need to take place. So yes.
Battalion chiefs, they need fire poles, don't they?
Not always.
Nope.
Depends, depends on the battalion chief.
So the, your board, the, is going to be asking our voters and our council for support of this measure in November. And yet last week or the week before, the board did not support our community in our efforts with our plan, urban renewal district. So that's disappointing. And I know that's not in your wheelhouse or your control, but you can send it back to the chain that we are very, 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 very supportive of our fire district. But when our fire district isn't reciprocal, it hurts.
Mayor Maze and members of the council, I can't speak on behalf of our board, but I have represented the fire district on the task force. And our board is supportive generally of the urban renewal plan. It's just that specific use of the taxing.
When they vote no on what we asked them to vote on, that is what is disappointing. So you know, but I'm just sharing. So yeah, very disappointing. So, but we love our fire district. We want our fire district to continue to serve our community well. And in fact, the chief, we're going to, you are going to have a meeting. Joe will set it up. We have to talk about some other things around, talk about here, but we're excited about the year ahead as we all come out of this pandemic. And the efforts that you guys do to help us get there as well to get us vaccinated and help educate others to convince them to get vaccinated as well. So I appreciate that. More questions? Chief, how are you doing with these folks? I know you got a pretty good relationship with them. Chief, how are you doing with these folks? I know you got a pretty good relationship with them.
Couldn't be better. We love TVFMR. Great partners.
Appreciate it. I would echo that.
Interesting to see their stats, which were resembled ours last year as well with with some of the dips as a result of COVID. So that was interesting.
Yeah. I I do have map was certainly interesting.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Sorry, Russell.
About that report, that slide that the chief talked about, one of those categories across the top was good intent. It was zero and then it was it turned into something. What is what does that mean?
Yeah, good question. That that's that's an easy one to kind of we'll go back to that. So good intent. So that's a call type. So that could be, you know, oh, a variety of calls. That could be a smoke call. That could be, it really depend that that's kind of a clearinghouse category for I'm not exactly sure what to put it in. And so that one. Yeah, I'm not sure that I gave you the best answer there, but.
Yeah, all right.
I can help out a little bit with that as well, that sometimes someone might call to report smoke and it's not smoke. Or someone might need help getting picked up and it actually becomes a more acute medical call. And so it really, the dispatchers are doing the best with the information that they have and it gets captured that way through the dispatch. And then when we clean up the data after the firefighters and paramedics report what they found, then we track both of those things because there's still discernible trends for those. But as Chief French mentioned earlier, they don't always end up being the same.
Right, right. Yeah, thank you. I have a quick question on that same slide. You had some stats in the bottom right hand corner about how often other stations come into Sherwood. Do you have similar stats on how often the Sherwood trucks are going to other communities?
And we do. Yes, we track all of that in our standards of cover. So as you can see, just kind of from the granularity of that, we walk through all of our stations. So that really helps us understand. You know, but I will say, being a regional fire department, there could be times where Station thirty three is responding. You know, maybe they've moved up to training and then all of a sudden they get a call on Tuolton based on A V L, but we do track all of that.
I thought your heat map was certainly just oops.
The only thing that I would add to that is seeing such a high percentage of the time that Sherwood is responding to Sherwood calls tells us that the station is in a really good location based on where calls occur and the frequency that they occur. So that's another means to validate a station location as we do the data analysis and the deployment analysis. And if we can get you the statistics on how frequently Sherwood responds to the neighboring cities as well. If that would be useful.
It's just, it's more curiosity, but that would be great.
And the heat map I thought was certainly interesting. Not, I don't think surprisingly, it it matches areas where we have assistance living centers focused. Other other questions? All right. Well, Chief, thank you so much. Greatly appreciate the presentation and the information and the chance to to visit with you tonight.
Both.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I I appreciate your time.
You bet. Tim, do you still have another question? You just leaving your hand up.
I was demonstrating how to put your hand up for Russell.
Sorry for interrupting. Thank you. Thank you, Chief and Chief. Enjoy the rest of your night.
You too.
Bye.
Excellent. Moving on, next on our agenda is new business. I just one item under new business and that's resolution twenty twenty one to zero two zero removing the Woodhaven Residential Parking Districts. Chief Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good to see you all, even if it's on TV. This is a pretty straightforward resolution. I think you have the staff report in front of you. So just by way of reminder, the residential, the city created residential parking districts to deal with a specific parking issues. And so we created two in the Woodhaven neighborhood. And the the issue, of course, was the overflow parking from Sherwood High School. Really, in some areas, really kind of filled up those neighborhoods. So these districts brought relief to those folks. And obviously, with the completion of the new high school and the old high school now becoming the middle school, we do not anticipate near as many drivers for Sherwood Middle School. And so it's probably not going to be any any of the parking issues that we had before. It's important to note that we did reach out to the Woodhaven HOA. They were huge supporters of creating the district. And they also support the removal of the district now with this change. So the district is identified. I I attached maps to kind of give you a visual reference, but the district is really best identified by the text descriptions that are contained in the staff report and the resolution. So I'll leave it at that and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. I agree that this this is timely. And the right the right move. But other questions for for Chief on this or discussion?
I don't have any questions. I think it's it's time, yeah, to definitely get get them moved removed.
Yeah, it makes total sense. And I the one question I have is is was this when when the district was in place, when the kids are still going to school? Was that eating up a lot of time for our code? Is that code compliance that was dealing with parking issues?
To some degree, yes. Council President, but it was also a lot of patrol response. So we dealt with a lot of calls there and a lot of frustrated folks. Then once the district was created, of course, there was an initial volume of work that was required to educate people and and then it kind of occurred of itself. And then it was an occasional call if somebody was thought to be violating the parking district or something, but it was actually very effective. And we also, there is another one that's created that is still in place and it's been very effective and continues to be very effective as well. Over by Snyder Park, just a very small one.
Yeah, I mean, I can just speak from the fact that I live a couple of blocks from the high school in the special parking district. And I have a sign in my in my parking strip that I look forward to being removed. And make sure you take the base part that's buried in the ground, too. Don't just take the pole. You know, it 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 really has been effective.
Be sure to do that, will you, Chief?
I know it's not the chief. Anyway, it's been really effective. It's it's really been almost, I mean, even pre COVID, it was essentially a non issue in my in my mind. So I think it's worked. It's done its purpose and no reason to keep it now.
What's the one over by Snyder and and why? Why do we happen in that area?
Inauditing a
So
neighborhood that for people playing sports in the park.
It's on Smock Street and it's a very, just a very short section of Smock Street from the intersection to where it ends at Snyder Park. And the mayor is exactly right. There was tremendous overflow. In particular, on the weekends, but also evenings when there would be games going on. And folks would park there and then just walk right up into the park. Certainly convenient for them, but inconvenient for the residents.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, but again, a little bit of education and and putting it in place. And then lo and behold, people learn and behaviors change and So any other discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution two zero two one dash zero two zero, removing the Woodhaven Residential Parking Districts.
Second.
Thank you, Kim and Russell, for seconding discussion on the motion.
I have a clarifying question.
Yes.
Given that I have a sign in my right away, am I, I don't want to like, should I recuse myself from the vote?
No. It's not a comment. It's no, no.
Okay.
Josh, if you want to weigh in, but I think that's a big no.
Yeah, there's an exception for when it applies to a subsection of the population equally that I think would apply here. Also, I don't see a direct economic benefit or loss associated with the vote, so.
Yeah, I I was more being silly, but also I want to make sure there's full transparency. So thank you.
Great. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty one to zero two zero, removing the Woodhaven Residential Parking Districts, say aye. Opposed? Awesome motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council. Public hearings, we have two items in public hearings today, a second reading and a first reading. Sylvia?
Yes, we do, Mayor. This evening, the City Council will hear testimony on two ordinances, ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero two, adding chapter nine point six six to the Sherwood Municipal Code relating to the use of City of Sherwood logos. This is the second reading on this item. And ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero three, approving annexation of two point one nine acres to the City of Sherwood and Clean Water Services, comprised of one lot in adjacent southwest Brooklyn Road right away within the Brookman Edition concept plan area. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the staff report, questions, if any, by the City Council for staff. And then we will receive written testimony. At this time, Mayor and Council, I have not received any testimony on these items. We will then close the public hearing. For the ordinance that is on the second, for ordinance number zero zero two, where this is the second hearing. A decision may be made by the council at the close of this hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this is the only notice of that date you will receive. For ordinance zero zero three, as this is the first hearing before the City Council, the council will hold two hearings prior to making a decision. A second hearing on this item is currently scheduled for March, excuse me, May the fourth. However, in accordance with the city charter, council observes the right to make a decision at the close of this hearing by unanimous vote of all City Council members.
Thank you, Sylvia. So Jake, welcome back. Good to see you. Sorry for bringing you inside on a wonderful spring evening in town, but tell us about your ordinance, your proposed ordinance.
All right. Good evening. Good to see all of you again. Since this is the second hearing on this ordinance, I will just provide a brief recap. This ordinance proposes adding a new chapter to the Sherwood Municipal Code that protects the city's interest in city logos and prevents third parties from using city logos in ways that falsely imply that the city supports or approves whatever the logo is attached to. As we discussed during the first public hearing, adding this new code chapter is the best way to protect city logos from impermissible use because the city cannot trademark its logos. As a reminder, the proposed code chapter has three sections. The section describes and depicts the city's logos. The second section defines misuse of the city logo. And the third section establishes the penalty for misusing a city logo. If the City Council has any further questions regarding this ordinance, I am happy to answer them now.
Awesome. Thanks, Jake. So we did not get any testimony, public testimony for this item. So we will officially close the public hearing portion of the second reading of this ordinance. Questions of Jake from council. Great. Good job in summarizing your presentation from last meeting, by the way. Anything, anyone? It was well said and it's good.
I have a quick question. I'm just curious if, under this ordinance, and it's a jurisdictional question. So if if someone in Clark County uses our logo, right, how do we enforce that? That issue. I'm just I'm just curious how that works.
I believe, and Josh can correct me if I'm wrong, but the code chapter would really only prevent and be prevent misuse and be enforceable within the city's jurisdiction. Which I guess realistically is probably where we're most concerned about it being misused. But I'm not sure that it would necessarily do much outside of the city. And it's, I believe it's just limited to within the city's jurisdiction.
Jake is absolutely right. That is the limitation of this ordinance. But as he said also, realistically, we expect that any any issues we would have would be by someone within the city limits.
I mean, presumably, we would still have copyright or trademark. You know, law on our side or no as a public entity, does that not apply?
No, that's the reason we have to use this code chapter in the first place is because the city logos aren't protected by trademark law.
Thank you.
So if my friend Scott lives outside the city limits was to use our logo in some way, we could not go after him. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Well, that's too bad.
Better tell your friend Scott not to do that.
Right? Other questions or discussion on the proposed ordinance? So this is the second reading. So now would be a great time if there is general support to say so now with a motion.
It would be recapture and adopt ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero two, adding chapter nine point six six to the Sherwood Municipal Code relating to the use of City of Sherwood logos.
Second.
Awesome. Thank you for the motion in the second.
Ordinance two zero two one dash zero zero two, adding chapter nine point six six to the Sherwood Municipal Code related to the use of City of Sherwood logos. Counselor Scott, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Griffin?
Aye.
Counselor Ross?
Aye.
Counselor Young?
Aye.
Counselor Garland?
Aye.
Council President Rosner?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Thank you, Jake. Great job. How much how much longer do we have your your skills and talent to support to support our fine community?
This is actually my last week.
Oh, Josh, can't you throw him one more thing to work on real quick then?
Can we, we need a new ordinance, brainstorm.
I did send him two more projects today.
Well, Jake, we greatly appreciate your your time and energy that you gave to your community. And we are better better because of it. And we wish you all the best as you kind of decide what what area to specialize or focus your your cranium on, your your legal mind. And when we're excited, we're excited to see to see what you do. So keep us in the loop. We want to know. We expect and we know great, great things are going to come.
Thank you. Kind of great experience.
Thank you, Jake.
Awesome. So our second ordinance, Eric, is gonna talk about.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Mays and City Council. Hopefully you can all see my screen here and all right. Yeah, good evening, Mayor Mays and City Council. Happy to be with you, giving a staff presentation for annexation LU twenty twenty one dash zero zero three.
Can I, this is Counselor Young. Can I just jump in? I'm not sure if everybody's muted, but I'm getting a lot of feedback.
I'm hearing it too.
Much better. Sorry about that, Eric.
All right, no worries. So the applicant is seeking approval from the City of Sherwood to annex two point one nine acres of land into the City of Sherwood and Clean Water Services boundaries. The applicant is requesting the annexation utilizing the procedures outlined in S B fifteen seventy three or O R S two 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 point one two seven. Under this method, the annexation does not require a vote by the city electorate. However, the petition must be signed by all affected property owners and meet certain approval criteria, which I'll go over in just a second. This is a type five application with the City Council as the hearing authority. Notice of the application was routed to affected agencies on March eighteenth, twenty twenty one, and agency comments have been incorporated into the findings and exhibits of the staff report. Public notice of the application was provided in accordance with local, regional, and state requirements, including mailed notice to property owners within a thousand feet of the site. As of this afternoon, no written public comments have been received on the application. The location and existing conditions, site is located on the north side of Brookman Road. It's outlined here in red, just west of Oberst Road. The site slopes down from east to west as it approaches Cedar Creek here. The site does have a single family dwelling and detached workshop at the northwest corner. The remainder of the property is open grass with patches of trees near the boundary. The property is part of the Brookman Edition Planning Area, which was brought into the urban growth boundary in two thousand two. To date, the city has annexed approximately ninety five acres of the two hundred and fifty acre Brookman Edition and approved approximately two hundred and forty four single family lots. This is a overview of just the, the annexations that have occurred so far. So you can see the, the city boundary here in purple. All of that land has been annexed as part of the Brookman Edition. These other colored areas are the subdivisions that we have approved, so three different subdivisions. The largest being Middlebrook Subdivision, that's under construction now in terms of public improvements. They have not started to construct homes, but public improvements. These two have approval on paper, but have not yet started the construction phase, and you can see the, the site that you are considering tonight outlined there in red. The application requests approval to annex two point one nine acres into the city and Clean Water Services. This includes zero point one nine acres of right of way. There are three levels of review criteria for annexations, local, regional, and state. The applicable criteria at each level are shown here for reference. Chapter three and chapter eight of the city's comprehensive plan apply to the proposal. Chapter three addresses growth management. Chapter eight addresses UGB expansions. The site is subject to the city's existing comprehensive plan. It's in the central subarea of the Brookman Edition. You see the arrow pointing roughly to the site there in red. Upon annexation, the site will be zoned medium density residential high in conformance with the Brookman Edition Plan and the city's comprehensive plan. Annexation of the parcel will, will allow orderly expansion of the city boundary and extension of public services without leapfrogging other developable property. This is a plat for the Middlebrook subdivision, the, the largest one that's under construction. Now, the, as part of the public improvements for this subdivision, utilities, including water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and roads will be stubbed. Find my arrow here, here to the east, eastern boundary of the site under consideration tonight. The regional approval criteria require the boundary change to be consistent with any applicable local plans and intergovernmental agreements. The property is included under the Washington County Sherwood Urban Planning Area Agreement, or UPAA, with the city providing urban services upon annexation. These urban services include sanitary sewer, water, fire protection, and roads. The required urban services are available to service the site as described in the staff report and engineering comments. Local police and fire departments have indicated service availability. And the city sewer, water, and transportation plans have accounted for the new development and growth to happen in the, in the Brookman Edition. As mentioned previously, the application is being processed under ORS two 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 point one two seven. The subject site and application meet the four approval criteria listed here, including being covered by the city's comprehensive plan and being contiguous to existing city limits. Since the city already receives services from Clean Water Services, property will also be included in the district, in their district boundaries upon annexation. As stated previously, no written public comments have been received on the application. And the council alternatives this evening, hold the first public hearing and adopt the ordinance tonight with a unanimous vote. You can hold the first public hearing and issue a decision on the matter after the second hearing, which is scheduled for May fourth, or hold the first public hearing tonight and direct staff to prepare a final order with revised findings that denies the annexation request. That concludes the staff presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Eric. Fairly straightforward, but questions for, oh, it is public hearing. We received no testimony from the community in advance, so we will formally close the public hearing for the first reading this evening. Now, questions for Eric?
We do have, I just wanted to comment, we do have the applicant consultant on the, on the meeting as well, in case you have any questions for them.
Excellent. Yeah, straightforward. It's already, this, it's in the city on the other, on three sides, and the fourth is the street. Meets all the legal criteria, both for the city and the state and their annexation process. There's an argument that we received no public testimony. We would have to annex pretty much regardless. Do we want to have a second reading? Or does Council want to support the annexation today? Or what are the thoughts and desires of Council?
It is a general rule, I think we should have a second hearing, the, the, just to give people time to respond if there is an issue or concern. I know we didn't do that on the previous annexations, but those were voted on prior by the public.
Yep. Okay, it's no problem. We will have another hearing. Any questions for the applicant or for Eric? Cool. That makes it easy. Thank you, everyone. We will see you again in a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mayor Mays.
Thank you, Eric. Next on our agenda is City Manager Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple items just to update you and the public on, and then answer any questions like normal. So, a couple of things coming in May, just folks may be wondering where we are with the recruitment process for my replacements. Staff has been working very closely in the last week, week and a half, with our recruiter who works for SGR, Lynn Barbosa. Those have been very good conversations. We have a timeline that I shared with Council that I didn't hear any necessarily feedback on. I do want to stress that timeline could be quicker if certain things happen quicker. So for example, we had information that was required with a deadline of Thursday this week. We got that to her today, Tuesday, so she now has two extra days. When we get the position profile, which is the marketing materials that will be used, she gave Council a week to review that. I will probably say if we can do that in less than a week, then we can get it advertised and kind of move the schedule earlier than what she proposed, but please take a look at that. I have my normal meetings with you this week with many of you, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer that. But we're off on a, a good start. And the recruiter will be calling each of the counselors to do a stakeholder interview, basically have more conversations one-on-one with each counselor about what you're looking for in your next city manager. So. And then the other big item that will be coming in early May, the budget for next fiscal year will be released on May tenth on that date, and then May twentieth is the first Budget Committee meeting that is scheduled for Budget Committee deliberations. I will be here on that date. That will probably be my last official meeting as city manager, since the day after that, May twenty first is my last date. So. Working very closely with, with Kristen Schweitzer as the interim Assistant City Manager, and who will be following in my footsteps when I walk out the door in late May, and she'll be the City Manager Pro Tem. She's doing a great job, kind of drinking from the fire hose right now, but she's getting up to speed on everything. So those are the two items I wanted to touch on. Any questions on those items or anything else for myself or senior leadership for this evening?
Crickets, absolute crickets. Weather, the sun comes out, sun is shining, skies blue, just another typical day, and sure would, no questions for Joe. Easy peasy.
Kristen, did Joe miss anything?
What was that, Counselor Rosner?
Oh, I just wanted to know, I was asking Kristen if Joe missed anything in his, his update.
I believe so.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
You know, in national news, there was a verdict on a, on a, on a in a case in Minnesota that by all accounts, sounds like it was the right decision, but our, you know, police officers are under stress and all of that stuff, and want to just, you know, do a shout out to Police Chief Growth and our police force, and what a great job each and every one of them are doing, and how much they're appreciated by our council and by our community. You guys do the job right, do the work right, and and we're proud of each and every one of you.
Here, here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Other okay, hearing done, we'll go to council announcements. Who's got something to share?
I'll share. As mentioned earlier, things are, are heating up on planning commission, just like the weather is, so there's a lot of activity going on there right now, and, and it looks to be a, a busy summer. Maybe there's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe. So they did have a, a meeting last week. I think the there was a public hearing around the adoption of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, so I think they are forwarding that on, onto us now, so that'll be coming our way very soon. Two, three things coming up, starting next week's Tuesday meeting, seven PM here on YouTube. There'll be a public hearing around the, the blanking out, the, oh, the urban renewal plan, so the URA, URA Agency we've been discussing, and that's going in front of the, the Planning Commission next week, so really excited to see that, that ball moving forward. So if you have testimony, you have time to submit that still, so make sure you, you get online, get that testimony in, in writing ahead of the, the public hearing next Tuesday on that. Additionally, couple of things, there'll be an online open house related to two different subjects that the planning commission is actively working on. In the short term, the adoption of residential design standards for, you know, for all residential development in the City of Sherwood, that's something that has really never been done. It's been lacking. It's been on the backlog of things to do for a very, very long time. So we're excited that the planning commission is, is getting after really adoption, adopting, you know, some, some basic design standards for residential development, both, you know, new and, and infill. So that open house will, I think that's going live either later this week or, or early next week for certain. I don't have the exact date, but look, it'll be posted on all our social media things, so there's an opportunity to really get to learn a lot about what's going on there, and there's a, there's an opportunity to give your feedback and your input into that process. And then the, the works, the, the planning commission will start having work sessions and public hearings on that starting next week as well. And then the second item is, you know, as, as most of us know, and as we've talked about a lot, you know, the state our, our state Congress adapt, state legislature adopted House Bill two thousand one a couple of years ago, which, which really you know, creates a a, a must situation where we must allow development of of multi-unit housing on every, every residential lot available, so any lot available has to allow, you know, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, middle housing, cottage clusters, and other townhomes and other forms of, of multi, multifamily, you know, development. So we have until next summer, so the June of twenty twenty two, to adopt legislation at City of Sherwood to, to manage that in, in the ways that are outlined and allowed by that House Bill two thousand one. So that work is also, is also starting now. So the, the open house will also kind of begin to introduce those concepts, and as we move through the rest of the year and into next year, that will, that will take the form eventually of, of, you know, an ordinance that will eventually come through City Council for adoption of standards relating to being in compliance with the mandates given to us by Salem in regards to House Bill two thousand one. So definitely, you know, time to get involved in that and learn more about it and, and give your feedback into that process as well. And one last note, I will be absent at the next City Council meeting two weeks from tonight. I will be out of town on vacation. So I won't be here.
So, awesome. I remember as a general rule, don't tell us you're out of town on vacation unless it's just you and your family is still keeping the house safe and secure.
My family will be here keeping the house safe and secure. That is absolutely true.
Excellent. So, don't need to make chief's job maybe harder than other ways, you know, all that good stuff.
Thank you for the reminder.
Yes, you're not, the planning commission is not at all busy. That is, that, that is a heck of a dawker to work, and there's, I'm sure more coming your way. Other announcements? Renee?
Yes, sure. So, Mayor Mays, you were complimenting Chief Growth and the PD. So keeping in that vein, I'd like to share that on May twelfth, we will be hosting the annual Boots and Bling Gala, but it will be virtual this year. So the money that we raise as a police foundation will go towards helping to support our men and women in blue. So please mark your calendars for that date. The Senior Center or the Senior Advisory Committee met last Wednesday, and so just a few things to share there. In the month of March, over a thousand meals were served, and that's the largest so far during the pandemic. So things continue to go really well for the seniors in our community. The tax program through AARP has been extended through May fourteenth. So that's not just for the seniors, it's for people in the community who need assistance. And then there's a collaboration between the YMCA and the Senior Center. There was a fall prevention on the twentieth. Is that today? I don't even know what today is, to be honest with you. Yeah, it was today. And then there's a health fair coming up virtually. That's again, a partnership between the YMCA and the Senior Center. Regarding the library, the OLI conference is going on this week. I participated in a couple sessions regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, and plan on attending a couple more sessions this week. It was opened up to more than just library staff because it was virtual. I am a member of the Housing Advisory Committee for the, for Washington County, and as Metro Council President, Peterson was talking about the local implementation plan. I will be listening, listening in on that to actually on Thursday. And then I, too, will be gone on the next meeting, and my house will be secure, and my son's still at home. So I will not be here for that meeting, and I will not be calling in like I normally would because I'm going to enjoy the vacation, and that's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, Renee.
I'll go.
Great.
So last week, I attended the Police Advisory Board Meeting. It's my liaison position, and we had a great presentation from the Washington County Mental Health Response Team. So I would encourage any of our residents to go watch that. There's always been a lot of questions on, do we have any mental health staff, on staff at Sherwood, and that was just a great opportunity for them to come and, and show and explain how we partner with Washington County and, and use that. And, and I learned it's a pretty unique thing, like not anybody else in Oregon has that particular thing, or nationwide even, so it's kind of a trendsetter, I think, and hopefully more counties or departments or states might look into getting something like that. So that was really great thing. It can be watched on YouTube and And, yeah. Let's see, I think that might be about it. I don't have, I didn't put notes tonight, so I'll say that's it.
Awesome. Thanks, Kim. Russel?
Thank you, Mayor. As Doug mentioned, Councilor Scott, the Parks Rec Master Plan will be coming up to council on our next meeting. So, it's very exciting. I think, I think that, that the team, the team, everybody did a great job. It's a beautiful and very cool document. Let's see, I wanted to remind everybody that if it happens when we want it to happen, the Robin Hood Festival will be maybe July sixteenth through the eighteenth. If not, it might be September twenty-fourth through the twenty-fifth. And sometime next month, they're going to make that decision. But still, if you want to nominate a Sherwood citizen to be knighted, you can do that by, I think it's May first. So, you go to the website, and there's an email, and you can send an email. And be sure and do that. If there's somebody in the community who, who volunteers a lot, and that should be recognized and hasn't yet. We have a lot of knights and nightesses walking around the city. Be sure and do that. Also, they're looking for volunteers, so whenever it does happen, they always need an army of volunteers. And you can go to the website and, and get all that information. So, that was it.
Awesome. Sean?
Yeah, I have a few things. Cultural Arts Committee last night for our monthly meeting. They continue to do good work. Hopefully, some of you have seen the artwork on the sidewalks that's activated by rain. I think the, we've all had such great weather here over the last week. We haven't been able to see those, but rainbow at the end of the week here, I guess, as we will see some this week. So, keep your eyes open in some of our public spaces for those great artwork. They did a great job with that. As you've probably seen from some of the signs around town here lately, we have a school board election coming up in May. And I just want to highlight that the voter registration deadline is April twenty-seventh, which is a week from tonight. So, if you've moved or you're new to Sherwood, or if you just haven't checked your registration in a while, just go Google Oregon Secretary of State, and then there's a section in there voting and elections. It'll bring you in there. There's an option to check your registration or register if you are not registered. Couple other just safety, public safety issues. The American Red Cross is very low on blood right now, has been during the entire pandemic, but is, is at a critical stage right now. I just did a quick search on the American Red Cross website, which is redcrossblood.org. Go in there, you search for drive in nine, seven, one, four, oh. We have a lot of blood drives coming up in Sherwood here. In April and May, we've got a St. Francis Church, Center for the Arts, Community Friends Church, Sherwood Police Department, Sherwood Y M C A, the Starbucks on Edie Road. I mean, so we've got a ton of opportunities over the next five to six weeks to donate blood if you can. I've done it a few times. I know Joe Goller, city manager, has also done it a few times during the pandemic. They do a great job with safety COVID precautions. So, if you're able, I would highly recommend that. If you've had a COVID vaccine, you can still donate blood. So, that does not eliminate you from donating blood. So, if you can, please do. And I won't steal the, the mayor's thunder. I imagine he has an announcement to say, but just keep wearing those masks, folks, and get vaccinated if you can, please. Thanks. That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Tim?
So, I got a couple of things. So, I, last week I got to testify down in Salem in front of the Joint Ways and Means Committee. They are having discussions on how to spend the, around two billion dollars that the state is getting from the latest COVID relief bill. We weren't, as a city, we weren't lobbying for a specific project, but we were lobbying that the state work with local jurisdictions to find out how we can partner to better leverage the funds. As many of you know, the city of Sherwood is, we think is going to get around four million dollars. And we can do so much more with those funds if we partner with the state on that in terms of needed transportation projects and other projects that we have in mind in the city here and using those funds. So, that was, that was a good meeting, long, lots of people testifying, lots of people with asks. And that usually happens when there's a big pile of money out there. I also wanted to thank the, the police department. They do a great job. Kind of just rolling onto what Keith and Renee were riffing about. I, I, I can't say enough about the quality of our police department. They set the example. I think a lot of, some, some departments can learn a lot from what our P D does in terms of their training and how they partner with mental health professionals. And I could go on and on, but you guys do a great job. And Chief, please pass that along to the, the team over there. I also wanted to, I attended the G P I, G P E D meeting last week. If you listened to the work session, you heard Lynn Peterson talk about that, but that Metro's partnering with G P I to develop a economic recovery plan, five-year plan for the region. And we got a great presentation from where they're at in that process and, and how they're looking at that. So, that was a good meeting. I also attended a work session of local, not a work session, I'm sorry, a working group of local elected, electeds. It's working with Washington County kids to figure out ways to bring preschool programs, after-school programs to our kids in Washington County. What else do I have here? Oh, and then coming up next month, I'll be attending a work session with our school board to discuss the, the U R A. The school board's one of the, our partners has to approve that U R A. And then, then I also wanted to mention, we have three rotarians on city council. And the Rotary Club of Sherwood right now is sponsoring the, or not sponsoring, we're having our tree sale. The tree sale is back for anyone who's looking. We've had a great start. We, we were a little worried we wouldn't get enough trees this year because the demand is so high, but we got a great selection of trees. So, I encourage everyone, if, if you need a tree for your yard, to get down, get down there and, and buy a tree. They're very inexpensive. And, and all that money goes back into the Rotary Foundation, which funds local projects, international clean water projects. The, as an example, the, the covered picnic area down at Stella Olson is a, is a project that Rotary did. The concession stand at the old high school, now the middle school, was Rotary project. So, there's a lot of that money funds, funds great projects in the Sherwood area. So, you can get a tree and support your community at the same time. And, and then just a quick note, shout out to Craig's team. The Historical Society over at the Morbeck House is really happy with the work, and they're excited about the foundation getting repaired over there and preserving that little piece of history for Sherwood. So, appreciate all you guys' hard work on that. Thank you. That's all I got.
Awesome. Thanks, Tim. Yeah, Craig, City Parks look great. Your teams continue to do a great job. City parks are open spaces and are street, street escapes. So, kudos there. The certainly busy with different meetings, some that I joined Tim with, different county and state stuff. The news of the day is on COVID is not good because of the metrics. Governor Brown is having us follow, and the cases of new positive tests in Washington County starting Friday. We are going backwards. So, we are for restaurants and bars and everything else in that category. Restaurants go from fifty percent occupancy to twenty-five percent occupancy starting Friday. So, it's a good reminder, if you haven't been vaccinated, please do. The more and faster folks are vaccinated, the faster we're on the other side of this thing. Helped.
Mayor, we've lost you.
He's frozen in time.
It's kind of peaceful.
Wow. Can we adjourn the meeting while he's frozen?
We'll give him a second and then.
Little unusual, has not happened, so. So, Council President Rosner. Maybe in light of that fact.
Well, given, yeah, the mayor is frozen and we can't.
And he's left.
Meeting at this point. I think he had about wrapped things up. The only thing I would add is, is I just got my second vaccine at the convention center. They have a wonderful process down there. We were in and out fast. And it's like it never happened. So, I encourage everyone out there, now that eligibility's opened up to everyone sixteen years and older, to get your vaccines. The quicker we get to herd immunity, the better. Keith, I thought we'd lost you, so I was stepping in to finish it out.
And I have no idea what happened, but yes, I lost interconnect. This is why Sherwood broadband cannot be rolled out fast enough, just saying.
Talking about vaccines, one, one thing that I'm finding a little difficult is if you go get your first one somewhere, anywhere, like a drugstore, like my son got his at a drugstore. And then they automatically assign you a second date for a second one, and he's not able to go on that date because it's day of finals. That when I'm trying to go reschedule him through some drugstores, they don't, they don't give you the option to be scheduling your second dose. It goes always to the first dose. So, that's a little complicated. I got to figure that out.
So, I, I would call, call one of the phone numbers, like the H S U number.
Well, yeah, but he's in Colorado, but but I was, but I'm trying to schedule him here for a second because he's going to be home. So, yeah, I'll call one of the numbers. But I just thought that was interesting, that if you get it one place and can't do the second, that you might have a little bit of difficulty.
Yeah, I, I will say to that, Legacy Health is doing an amazing job at the convention center. And when you're waiting, you're fifteen minutes at the end, they have a whole line of tables with people ready to schedule you, and you get to pick your date and.
Or you can sit and do it on your app while you're waiting for your fifteen minutes. I mean, either way.
Yeah, it's, they really have that, that down to a science there.
Amazingly organized process there. It just feels like you're on a conveyor belt going through that building. It just move you to the next station, to the next station, and you always know where you need to be and what you need to do, and you're in and out of there as quickly as possible. Highly recommend it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Please, everyone, get vaccinated. If you're vaccinated, urge your family and friends to be vaccinated. If need be, use guilt or whatever persuasion that's needed. You know, I've been doing that with a couple in my extended family with some success, which is good. With that, I, why don't we adjourn the city council meeting? And, and then we're, we have another work session. So, the night's still.